Which will be held at three o'clock in the afternoon at River Valley Church. And we'll be singing a number of numbers along with other groups that will be singing as well. And we'll receive a free will offering that day and the money will go to our Treasury. And that Treasury is spilled out to three women's organizations in our area that lift up women. And I'm struggling, Ruth House is one of them, Whispers of Hope and the Hope Center, I believe, are the recipients of our gifts. And on average, we give about $1,500 to each one of those three organizations a year. We're very proud of that. And we call on you to support us in our concert and our fundraising efforts.
All right, and we got one final presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll ask Robert Harris III to come to the podium here. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Robert. Robert is our new economic development coordinator. He's been with us now several weeks and he comes with us. I'll let him introduce himself in more detail, but I do want to tell you that he is quite impressive. We're very fortunate to have him here in Faribault and particularly in our department. He has a lot to offer. And like the rest of our staff, Harry Davis and Harry, we have a really dedicated staff that care immensely about this community and Robert is the same. He is going to make a positive difference in this community. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Robert to give a little bit more of an introduction of himself.
Well, thanks so much for that introduction, Dave. I'm very happy to be joining the city. I've worked in economic development for about the last five years, most recently as the Director of Strategic Initiatives with an organization called SIDA. So I've been an economic development consultant for some of the smaller cities across both central and southeastern Minnesota and excited to bring that experience and that perspective here.
Well, thank you for joining the team. There's lots of work to be done and Faribault is a very fast-paced growing community. So there's, you won't ever be bored.
I've experienced that.
Welcome. All right, we're done with all of our presentations and introductions. Move on to approving the minutes of the August 27th, 2024 City Council meeting.
Did we have the clipboard?
That's number five. All right, I need, any changes to the minutes of the August 27th, 2024 City Council? If none, I would take a motion and second to approve. Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Teal, second by Councilmember Von Slus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, we have one request to be heard from the SBA.
Hello, everyone. The SBA disaster program. My name is Arlie Screen. I'm a public affairs specialist for the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And I'm here for the severe storms and flooding that took place back in June. We have two programs. We have a physical damage program and we have an economic injury. Now, for the physical, landlords, homeowners, renters, businesses, nonprofit organizations with physical damages, it's welcome to apply. They're eligible. And the deadline to apply for that program is September 30th, 2024. And then we have an economic program where the businesses for businesses and nonprofit organizations, and they do not have to have physical damages. The damages comes from the economic side of it where they may have had to close down. Or, you know, the people that were hit in neighboring communities, it kind of trickles down to each community that is involved in the disasters. So we, for that program, the deadline to apply is April 29th, 2025. And we give you a little bit of time to apply for that program because economic injury, sometimes it takes six months to a year before a business can even know that they were impacted by the storm. So hopefully, we can help your community to get back on their feet after suffering through a disaster. They're coming every day. So we just encourage you to, you know, apply if your community needs it. And I left some flyers on your desk, so it breaks down the programs, the interest rates, the eligibility and the terms. And I also left my business card. I will leave one more up here in case any of you want to contact me with any questions or concerns. So at this time, I will open the floor to anyone that has any questions.
Any questions?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming to make sure, making sure that we're aware of this. All right, back onto the agenda. We have Consent Agenda 6A through 6O. Anybody have any changes or corrections to be made? Administrator Kinzer.
Yes, Mayor Varacek. I just want to note that the date in Item B related to the display of the fireworks at the Divine Mercy School is not September 16th. It is September 21st, and that is a correction that we will make. And so I'd ask you to approve Item B with September 21st.
Any other changes or corrections to items in the... If none, I would take a motion and second to approve.
Mayor Varacek.
Councilmember Ross.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item O with the voted E.
Motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Dumia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We have no public hearings tonight. We'll move on to items for discussion. We'll start with Resolution 2024-187, Adopt the Highway 60 West Master Plan. Over to Director Wanberg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have the adoption of the Trunk Highway 60 West Master Plan in front of you. The applicant is the city of Faribault. The location that we're talking about is north and south of Trunk Highway 60, west of Interstate Highway 35. The council has seen this a couple of times over the last year or so. The request before you is to approve a resolution that would adopt that master plan and allow us to make some minor edits that don't change the overall direction of the plan. The location, again, I just put up on here, it's on the west side of I-35. Zooming in, it's primarily the areas that you see outside, outlined in yellow here, the parcels that you see yellow. Our adopted land use plan, which is in our Journey to 2040 Plan, guides the area on the north side of Trunk Highway 60 for commercial residential mix and on the south side for commercial industrial mix. What you'll see before you tonight really is consistent with those plans. In terms of background, a land use plan really is just a guide that, you know, identifies broad categories of land use, residential, commercial, industrial and that sort of use. It is not a development plan and it isn't zoning. So we have separate, it's, this is what our vision is, right? But we've had a number of residents and property owners in that area that would like a little more direction than just that simple land use. So we have budgeted and the Economic Development Authority did put in some money as well as Excel. Their Economic Development Grant gave us some money. To put together a master plan, we hired, the Economic Development Authority hired Bolton and Mink to prepare that master plan. And a master plan really, again, is not zoning, but it's an aspirational document that's intended to help really inspire and guide future development. It does not acquire land. And the city is not a developer. It doesn't regulate the land. It's just something there, similar to, if you think about the Viaduct Park, we had a, you know, a master plan for that. What you see today looks slightly different than the master plan that we prepared a number of years ago, but it still is that general idea that we want a community park in that area. We refined it. That's how you should look at this master plan. So by way of background, decades ago, the city extended municipal utilities to 38th Avenue in anticipation of a big box commercial development there. That did not materialize. Since then, again, it has sat, but there are now current landowners and developers that have expressed interest in development in the area and they are looking for more guidance from the city in terms of what that might look like. And again, that's why we have the master plan. So the vision for this is that, and this has come out of Community Vision 2040 and Journey to 2040 Comprehensive Plan as well, that this is an active front door into Faribault where regional economic activity and new neighborhoods are woven into the natural landscape. We have a number of principles just in terms of providing a welcoming gateway, embracing, you know, the natural features there and trying to have complementary uses out there that work well with the rest of the city. So that, those are really the primary principles with that. The consultant on this did a fairly detailed job in terms of an inventory and analysis. They identified challenges and opportunities. Some of the things that you see, particularly on the south side of Trunk Highway 60, you'll see some topography right up adjacent to Highway 60 that we have to account for. And those vertical red lines that you see on the screen, those are the pipelines. And that really does have a pretty significant swath through that. Where you see the letter A just south of Wells Lake, that light blue is the shoreline overlay. So that has a number of restrictions on development and we had to take that into account as we prepared this master plan. Again, this shows you some of that information, the areas that we're looking at, the yellow showing the easement running through for the pipelines and some ideas of where housing might be allowed, what type of housing, what type of commercial. So the area that you see, or the map that you see on the right-hand side, that's a concept plan. And again, it's just aspirational. Again, the city's not a developer. It's just something that we can give to people that shows residential is really the expectation on the north end of Trunk Highway 60 towards the west side of that. As you get closer to the interstate, we're looking at more of the commercial uses for cars to pull off, get into different things like hotels, it might be restaurants, it might be a number of those kinds of uses in that area. And then if you look at the south side, we're looking at commercial and industrial. So the existing cemetery, Calvary Cemetery, of course, would remain. And then looking at highway commercial uses that have exposure to the interstate highway and some industrial as you go further south. Again, I just want to clarify that we're not developers, we're not acquiring land, we're not rezoning this. Everything is staying the same. It's an aspirational plan. We're not requiring anyone to develop. We did have a number of public comments, so several residents did when they got notifications. We did hold the public hearing at the Planning Commission. So everyone within 350 feet of those parcels that you saw identified, both those landowners were notified of the public hearing and we did have several residents call. Primarily, they were expressing concerns over the existing and future traffic. They also attended, there were four people that attended the public hearing at the Planning Commission, two of which were residents on Wells Lake Drive, and they did express also concern about the future traffic, but fully understand that this is an aspiration. And also understand Trunk Highway 60 is a state highway. There are limited things that we can do with that. One property owner stated that he's not interested in selling or developing his land. One property owner and another expressed their support for the plan. So the recommendation coming forward from the Planning Commission, that they unanimously recommended the city council approve the resolution that you have in front of you based on the findings and conditions outlined in that resolution that would approve that. And again, the resolution does authorize us to make some minor, you know, grammatical corrections to the plan. Corrections together, but generally, the plan would remain exactly. With that, I am happy to answer questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Wanberg. Any questions? Guiding plans are always nice. They help us figure out what to do in the future. They've also brought in a few developers over the years that have seen our plans and said, hey, I want to be a part of that. There's no questions for Director Wanberg. I'll take a motion and second to approve Resolution 2024-187.
Yeah, Varacek.
Councilmember Dumia.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-17.
Who wants it? Okay. Motion by Councilmember Dumia, second by Councilmember Spooner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes. We'll move on to Ordinance 2024-19 Vacate a Portion of Drainage and Utility Easement at... Utility easement at 2343 14th Street Northeast. First reading, over to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Mayor, the item in front of you tonight is an ordinance to vacate a portion of a drainage and utility easement. The applicant is Johnson Rowland Builders and Remodelers. The owner of the property is Shattuck St. Mary's School and they have provided an affidavit supporting the easement vacation. The proposal is to allow for future residential development on a property at this location. Here's just a kind of a Google map view of it and then an aerial. The request is just a partial vacation of an existing drainage and utility easement. It's a rather straightforward request. It's the area that's in this image kind of hatched, looks a little gray perhaps on your screen. In terms of our ordinance requirements, we don't see any major issues with this. It meets vacation requirements for an easement. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to support the requests, and so we have no major issues and we do feel like that this meets all of our vacation requirements. So we are recommending that you approve the first reading of this ordinance, 2024-19.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions on this vacation? First reading. If none, I would take a motion and second to approve Ordinance 2024-19.
Mayor Varacek.
Councilmember Ross.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-19.
Motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Von Slus. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Karen.
Aye.
Councilmember Dabunya.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Slus.
Aye.
Councilmember Spooner. Councilmember Teal.
Aye.
And Mayor Varacek.
Aye.
It gets the same result, just a little quicker. All right, we'll move on to Ordinance 2024-18, Approve a Zoning Map Amendment for 818 8th Avenue Northwest. First reading, back over to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mayor, the item in front of you is an ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for, it's actually 1812, and I apologize, that's a error on my part, for the water treatment plant facility over there on 8th Avenue. City is the applicant. In fact, it's a coordination between the Community Economic Development Department and the Public Works Department for some potential improvements to that property in the future regarding the waste, the water treatment plant. So we're looking at a zoning map amendment. We see this as an existing government utility. Here's the location. I'm sure you all are probably very aware of where it is and where it's located, but just for those that are at home and those in the audience. The request is to change the property, what is currently R2, which is low density residential, to something a bit more appropriate for a city facility, which is P1, public institutional. Or, you know, just to clarify, you know, this is kind of the only bounce of the property that's going to be rezoned. We're not proposing to change anything regarding the existing homes adjacent to this property. It is just specifically the property for the wa, the water treatment plant. In terms of rezoning and how that's looked at within our code for criteria, we don't see any major issues. Major utilities are a permitted by right use for public institutional. And we do feel like that this is appropriate because the continued operational, the sort of needs of the facility there are really quite important to the rest of the city. And so its continued operation and the ability for it to expand in a way where it's not constricted by a low-density residential zoning district makes sense. Planning Commission did vote five to one in favor of the request. The one dissenting vote, an earlier version of this request included the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant was removed from the request. I can get into some detail on that if you'd like, but just clarifying that, you know, Public Works did request specifically this, this property. They have immediate improvements that they want to make upon it, and so that's why we're focusing more on this particular property. In summary, we are not seeing any major issues and we do feel like that this meets zoning map amendment requirements. So we're recommending that City Council approve the first reading of 2024-19.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions for Mr. Davis? A motion and a second?
Mayor Varacek.
Councilmember Ross.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-19. Second.
I'd like a motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Teal, and this is a roll.
What, didn't?
No, the, the address was wrong.
Oh, the address, okay.
So Ordinance 18.
Okay, then I will... For Ordinance 2024...
Got 812.
Second.
All good. Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Teal, and this is a roll call.
Councilmember Karen. Councilmember Dambuya.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Council Louis.
Aye.
Spooner.
Councilmember Teal.
Aye.
And Mayor Varacek.
Aye. That one passes first reading and I'll be back in two weeks. All right, now we're into property taxes. Are you going to do a single presentation for all four of them?
Or three.
Three?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So we'll have a presentation for Resolution 2024-177, Adopting the 2025 Preliminary Property Tax Levy and Establishing the Budget Meeting Date. Resolution 2024-178 Approving the Faribault Economic Development Authority Preliminary Property Tax Levy for Fiscal Year 2025. And Resolution 2024-179 Approving the Faribault Housing and Redevelopment Authority Preliminary Property Tax Levy for Fiscal Year 2025. Over to Administrator Kinzer.
Thank you, Mayor Varacek. So this is kind of where months of work on the budget has ended up. Some of this will sound familiar to you. A lot of this presentation is very similar to what we did with some options on July 30th. And so now that we are at a point where we are setting our preliminary tax levy, I could update some of the slides and get some of the information in here. So high-level overview of how we get to some of our values is that the market value is established by the county assessor. That information comes to us along with the gross tax capacity, which is what we then use to basically figure out what it is that we need to request from the property taxpayers and from the county to support our operations in a few specific areas for the next fiscal year. And so as of August 30th, I did get some new numbers from the, the county that there, there were some different changes in, in things that the, the gross tax, the market value went up, gross tax capacity went down slightly, and then we, we got our finalized TIF number, which was a little bit larger than what we had been talking about. But ultimately, that doesn't impact the tax dollars we need. It impacts more of what the rate ends up being. So our net tax capacity, good news is, it's an increase over 2024, a 1.37% increase. I'm sure we'd all like to see that value be just a little bit higher because we all know that inflation and other things are increasing more than 1.37% for the next year. So an interesting little piece of the information we got was that there's 300, almost $347,000 associated of our, with our tax capacity of new growth. And that really is most of our increase in this, this year for 2025 is due to new growth. And so that number was a little bit lower initially, or that percent was a little bit lower, so that actually increased. So what I, what I want to show here is a, a 20-year history of our market value, kind of drawing your, your line to... your line to the blue bars are the actual dollar values on your left axis, and the line is looking at the percent change over time, or from year to year, that's on the right axis. And so you can see the blue bar for 2025 is an increase over 2024, as we've said, 1.37%. But you can see that the yellow line is in a downward trend from 2023. I think the best way to describe this is 2023 was when sort of that boost in market value came from higher sales, more sales than had been happening in prior years. And what we've seen happen since 2023, where there was a 15% increase, is that we are seeing less of an increase in our market value from year to year, but the positive to note is there's still an increase. So even though that trend is downward there, we're hopeful that we can keep driving things forward with new growth, as you saw, which was a pretty significant part of where we got to this year, as well as then just the market factors, the sales and things happening at a way that keeps that number at least steady and rather than declining into 2026 and beyond. The next piece to look at is that 20-year net tax capacity history, and as you would expect, it looks pretty similar to the market value, and we would expect it to. What I like to point out here is if you look at 2014, which was a fairly low year next to 2013, after kind of riding a wave post-recession, we have pretty much doubled our tax capacity or come close to doubling our tax capacity in that time, between 2014 and 2025. And so that gives you an idea of where the organization has probably been. Now, costs have certainly changed during that time, too, and there's some other things that we'll show here in the near future. Again, increasing tax capacity, but the percentage of growth that we're seeing from that high point in 2023 is very different. And so we're not seeing 15% increase, we're seeing, you know, 1% increase. So things are changing that way. I think you would expect that. I think a 15% change is pretty significant when you kind of see, you know, the only other time that that happened was in 2008. So it's not something that we do see very often, kind of at that level. But kind of being in that area of, you know, seeing some growth is what's trended, except for that time period between 2009 and 2014. So this is probably a little bit hard to read, but it is the preliminary levy document that shows a few more years of history is in your packet. But I thought, we do a lot of comparison to 2024, so I thought focusing on these two years was really the best way to kind of start the conversation. And so you can see the left-hand column is 2024, the right-hand column is 2025, and then, or the middle column's 2025, and then far right is kind of the change as we go. And we'll talk about each of these more, but you can see kind of the net actual levy. We are looking at 14.68% in terms of the dollar change that was requested in 2024 compared to where we are at the preliminary levy point in 2025. And so that 14.68% is the number that's going to get bandied around quite a bit, but we're going to talk about some other numbers and other percents kind of as we go, because things do change. The thing that I want to point out on here, too, is the HRA and the EDA special levies do not play into that regular levy. If you've looked at your tax bill, those actually show up as separate lines. They're not in that total city levy, and so they are represented here. But when you add that in, there's $14.6 million at this preliminary stage that we would be requesting, and I should say that the HRA and the EDA is the full amount that can be requested under law. So how does this, you know, impact a property owner? We'll start out with the residential impact. And so I didn't change these values. I haven't been able to verify if $225,100 is still the median market value, but it's a number we'll work with in the future here. So I kept that the same, just knowing it was a good number that's been used in the past to work with. And so what you can see here is the dollar amounts that are expected as an increase, and then the percent of 12.95% would be the dollar increase per residential property regardless of the value. And so that's kind of the overview of the residential, ranging, you know, from a $76, almost $77 increase for 2025 with the preliminary levy on a $150,000, up to, we're showing a $350,000 at $209 for the next year. With businesses, businesses, commercial and industrial tend to have more value, so we're showing some numbers here that still show it's a 12.95% dollar increase over here kind of in these property scenarios. But obviously, if you're looking at market value of 5 million, where you don't have a homestead exemption and other things to help apply, you are looking at a larger dollar increase of just under $6,016. But 12.95% is kind of where that sits right now. And so as we start to look at the other side of this, we talk about the percent of dollar increase, you know, from year to year, the change in the dollars per property each year. The other side of this is the tax rate. So I've highlighted 2025 in our orangish-yellow color at 52.862%. Lots of percents being thrown around tonight, and so I'm happy to get you printed copies of this. I meant to do that for today, but I will get you a printed copy if you would like one, just so you can better see the numbers and carry it around with you if you get asked. We're proposing at this preliminary stage a 52.862% tax rate, which you can see is just barely the highest that would be in existence in the last five years. Five years is easy data to digest and to actually add the percent on there so that you can actually see, but we look at a larger history of 25 years. We can see that 52.862 has not been the highest that we've had in recent history in a 10-year look back. 2016, 2017, 2018 are represented on there at 56, 55, and 57%. And then I couldn't get more boxes on there to show 2019 was 54.8, and 2020 was a 53.14% tax rate as well. So are we out of the ballpark in a five-year sense? We're right at the top with 2021 being right behind in terms of a tax rate, but ultimately, looking back further between 2020 to 2016, this tax rate is not as high as what those are. So I think as we talk about things, it's easy to get really lost in the where we are right now, but I think the history in talking about where things have been is important as well to paint the bigger picture. So as the preliminary tax levy breaks down, 80, 85% basically is going to the general fund. That's where majority of our operations are, and so we would expect that that would be the case. Debt service is the second-largest user or space where we need property taxes to meet some obligations at 10%. And then community and economic development and tax abatement together make up the 5% that remains. So as we start talking about the general fund, at this preliminary stage, we're looking at proposed expenditures of $22.8 million. Property tax revenue is actually 51%, so more than 50% of, more than half of what our expenditures are. So right now, we're sitting in a balanced budget situation, and there's more we can talk about with that as we go along as well. And so 51.2% of those revenues or expenditures are directly supported by the property tax levy. The other really big item where we did have some new information come out between where we talked July 30th to today was about local government aid, LGA. And so that is 31% of our revenues in the general fund. And so right there, you've got 82% that is controlled by two revenue sources, which is not great diversification, but there's limited options that we have to really diversify. And so the remaining amount would be, there's some franchise fee that comes into the general fund, user fees, fines, charges for service, and different things that kind of make up that remaining 20%. We do need to talk about LGA and kind of that lower blue bar that is on the graph there in front of you. You'll notice that 2024 did have a bump. It was a significant bump that was an increase of nearly $900,000 from the prior year, and between 2024 and 2025, it's a $10,000 increase. But we didn't lose the nearly $900,000 that was received in 2024. We built on that, and then there was just a very small bump there in the 2025 LGA number. Just because it's an interesting revenue source and where it's been lately, it also looks very similar to some of those market value graphs of where 2023 wasn't the peak year, 2024 was the peak year in terms of percentage growth, and then we're back to just above 0% growth in the LGA for 2025, which, when you look across time, that has not been, that's been more of the trend than the norm, or more of the norm rather than the trend that we might see here and there. So I think as we look forward, you know, there's another legislative session that will happen next year, and from what I have heard, it sounds like local government aid is a frequent topic of conversation, and knowing it's 31% of our general fund budget, it is something that I think we'll want to make sure we can do what we can as the City of Fairboe to try and preserve that. So when we look at expenditures in the general fund, the $22.8 million breaks down kind of in these larger categories that we report on. Public safety is our largest expenditure area at 46%, with culture and recreation coming in second at 23%, and then public works just outpacing general government with 15%. And then the other functions are very small, like our contribution to Hiawatha Land Transit, and then anything that we would pay on a orderly annexation agreement, different things like that. Very, very small expenses that we plan on a regular basis. What I don't have prepared for this presentation is how do those expenditures break down by personnel cross-supplies and professional services? But I can tell you, I can't tell you the percent, but obviously, personnel is going to be our largest cost area. I would say there's probably not a city that is, that doesn't have personnel costs as their biggest expenditure area in the general fund. So I will get that chart updated before December 12th, and we'll be able to present that then. The next fund to talk about that is part of the tax levy is Fund 240, which is Community and Economic Development. There had been a trend of working towards eliminating property tax revenue coming into this fund, and so that has created a negative balance for 2023, which is part of, the recovery of that $53,000 is part of the proposed tax levy in addition to what is needed to operate in 2025, which is 410,000 of that 416,000. The proposed expenditures are 591,000. That does not, it's not an imbalance, it just means that there are other revenues coming into the fund that help us get this to the point where property tax revenues are supporting what the gap is. And so the other revenue includes some administrative fees and reimbursement from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The Housing and Redevelopment, or Housing and Redevelopment Authority Executive Director position is out there right now. It's not filled. I'm hopeful that we'll have a resolution before you at an upcoming council meeting to be able to fill that position, but that is a position that would be, 10% of those wages would be borne by the Community and Economic Development Fund and the tax levy, and then the remainder would be coming from the HRA funds, public housing, and then Robinwood as well, based on where the actual time was. And so there's, this fund is going to have some more conversation in 2026, because there is going to be a deficit in 2024, just because there is that revenue imbalance with just 66,000 of property tax coming in. So, but that's a 2026 conversation, so definitely not for tonight. As we look at Fund 239, which is our tax abatement fund, this is where we list out specifically those items that we have agreements for tax abatement on. And so this was prepared by Ellers, and it is a decrease, as you can see, from 2024, as there have been some changes with some dropping off and then a new one coming on. But typically, when a new tax abatement comes on, it tends to be at a lower level, just because it's an early valuation of whatever the new valuation might be. So that's what we're seeing here. I would expect this to be a higher number probably going into next year, and then, of course, there's more possibility to talk about tax abatement as an economic development tool moving forward through the remainder of this year to 2025. The next is our debt service funds. I'm calling them the 300 funds rather than presenting them, because as of November 1st, they will become one fund in our software change. So we, showing them together makes more sense at this point. So we have three existing bonds, which are your kind of first three columns there, that those are being levied with the request for 105% of the total principal and interest that's due, which is required under those bond agreements. The 2025 equipment loan is shown with what we had discussed at the last work session, and so using 2025 as an interest-only year, and then making equal payments over the next eight years, I believe, and looking at, or seven years, and then really looking at that as an internal loan that we're not going to go out to the marketplace. And so this will be something that we'll continue to discuss. It is not official debt as of yet. You have not officially committed to it, but we needed to commit to some number for the preliminary levy, otherwise we couldn't ask for it. And Councilmember Ross, I've updated your chart here so that you could see kind of where our debt looks, you know, the visual of what happens that you don't really see with that table on the last page. And so 2025, you know, shows an increase into 2026, and then basically, then we start to drop off a pretty big cliff to the point where we are right now at this point in time, just talking about a 2025 capital loan would have us with zero debt by 2034. I do need to mention that in the Capital Improvement Plan, which we haven't talked about, there are two really big items that still require a lot of further discussion by the council and the community of a new community center, as well as an additional fire station or a new fire station, or something in that vein to still be figured out. So assuming something would happen between, you know, 2025 and 2034, I would say it would be hard to sit here right now and say there'd be zero debt as of 2034, just based on where those discussions have been and where we need to continue to move on those, to just see if there's something to happen with the planning that's been done. And so that's that visual representation. And then kind of the final areas to talk about is the HRA and the EDA levies. So it's both a 9.5% increase on both of those, and the exciting thing for 2025 is that at the maximum level, which both boards requested the maximum level, that each would get over $400,000, which is a milestone that hadn't been seen previously. We have not, neither board has finalized their 2025 budget. I expect that that would be something that would be happening sometime in November, so that there would be a work session hopefully before December 12th that we'd be able to do a presentation and talk about the work plans of each of those groups, so you have an idea of what you're approving and how that has a greater impact on the community. And so that's kind of the big detail, but there's something fun that, not that there are a lot of fun things in budget and property taxes, but I think this one is quite fun. So we signed up with Polco for the community survey, and then working with them, they demoed a product with us called their property tax receipt, and we decided that we would go ahead and make this live with the preliminary tax levy, because that's where people are going to have all sorts of questions about what's happening. So we have not built this for 2024, so we can't have people compare 2024 to the preliminary levy for 2025, but I'm hoping they'll be able to look at their current tax statement and be able to see just a numbers change. I will say, there are some caveats. The, it does not include the HRA and the EDA, because they are separate levies, and so it was really hard to bank this in. And then we used a very simple calculation, knowing, we reduced all general fund expenses by 40, 49.8, or 48.9, or 48.8% to make to make the the expenses match the property tax dollars that are coming in. So I like to use engineering, I'll pick on engineering. So engineering essentially becomes a self-supporting department because they they charge fees on the engineering projects, on the projects that they do. And so that money does come back into the general fund as revenue. But we didn't zero out engineering or account for any of those other revenues that are really department-specific. I feel like I need more time to be able to mess around with that to figure out if there's a better way to represent departments that I just didn't have with this. So as we get closer to the final levy and the budget public hearing, I'm hoping that that is something that we'll we'll maybe have figured out a little bit more. And so I was going to show you a screen here. But I think what I'm going to do now is actually, we're going to go to the website, and I'll kind of walk you through. Okay, so where we are here on the City of Faribault website, you just need to go to Departments and to Finance. And then over here on the left-hand side, there is this Budget 2025 link. You click on that, and there's all sorts of information about what we're doing so far this year with the 2025 budget. And then the first thing is kind of this notice that we are launching this taxpayer receipt. So by clicking on the link, it will bring up this screen. And so really, who this is meant for are property owners. If you don't have a market value, like if you're renting and you don't have a market value, it just doesn't work. So but you can mess around with it for any property. How you get your market value is by, if you hover over this little and click on this, there's a link to the Rice County Beacon website where you can search your property and basically see what's what is out there for 2025 as your estimated market value. And then you can look at 2024 to see what your homestead exemption was or exclusion was and subtract that. And so we're going to go with the scenario that we have here of $225,100. So no homestead exclusion on that, just looking at that as the market value. And then you click on your unofficial property tax receipt. And what this does is it breaks down everything that is on our tax levy less the HRA and the EDA to tell you how much of what you are projected to pay as property taxes breaks down into departments. And so the the council, and that includes, you know, I think the other thing to point out is, you know, to click over here on the the button to see a description as well. So Mayor and six council members, it talks about you as well as the different things that are included in your budget. Like there's, I think it's about $240,000 worth of spending with local civic organizations. So that is probably why it, on a median house of $225,000, we're looking at $23.28. And so you can kind of see what this looks like as we go down. Public safety, as we mentioned before, it's the biggest spending area in general for the general fund. So you'd expect to see that number a little bit higher. But it truly breaks down by all the different departments that we budget for within the the general fund. And then as we scroll down here, you will notice that Viaduct Park is listed on here. We do have Viaduct Park in the 2025 budget because we do think we'll be operating it, operating a building for probably six months of the year. And so that is that is included at $9.95 on this scenario. As mentioned, the other functions, the miscellaneous unallocated transfers and transit, that is both in the general fund. And then the other things that are not in the general fund are the total debt as well as then community and economic development. So I I would say, we talked about a 12.95% dollar increase previously as sort of the residential and the commercial impact. When I used my property in this and pulled out my property tax statement for 2024 and looked at what was what was here, I was coming up with a 12.2% increase. So we caveat that this is just an example. This is not a final product or anything. And so encourage people to use this with, these are estimates. And ultimately, we'll update this as we get closer to the final public hearing as well in December. The final thing I want to point out to you on this because I think this will be helpful. We we want public engagement on the budget. We we want to hear things. We don't always get people in council chambers who are expressing their opinions or telling us what their priorities are. And so there is this link right here that will take take you to another web, to back to our webpage, to a form center where we do ask you to fill out some information if you feel like that's what you want to do. But this is a, this is a new tool for us. It's another way that we can help communicate what the budget looks like and what is actually part of a tax levy. Another final caveat is this does not include the school. It does not include the county. And so when you see your property tax number compared to your total property tax bill, it is going to be less because it is just the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or or anything else that you would like to see at this point.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. The LGA of just right a hair under $7 million, is that a hard number now or is that still an estimate?
Nope, it's a hard number. That that came out on July 31st.
Thank you.
Oh, and you know what? I realized I still had one more slide. I'm sorry. Next steps is the one that I wanted to just go through really quick because that that is getting back to something that Councilmember Ross had just said. So next steps, we are looking at, ultimately, the hearing will be on December 20, or December 12th, sorry about that. Here we go. So we're implementing the Polco tax receipt. And then we essentially kind of just sit here and wait. And there's some big things that will be happening between now and December. So there's hopefully settlement of collective bargaining agreements. All of our bargaining agreements are up for in 2025. We have not settled any of those. We also have health insurance elections to be made by new employees as well as open enrollment, and that does shift things. We budget new employees at the highest level possible. So typically, most don't select that. So then there's savings that'll come off that move things here or there. And then we expect that there will be some adjustment of our Tyler Technology fees and just some other small contractual items as well that probably move that number just a little bit. But I think December 3rd is when I would plan to come back, review everything with you, and then discuss a portion of local government aid that is not allocated towards operations in this preliminary levy. So there's rounding, there's a four, about $440,000 that we still have to talk about. I do believe that between now and then, there could be some things that would be presented to you that you might want to consider allocating some of that funding towards. And so we'll just have a kind of big wrap-up discussion on December 3rd before having that public hearing at the December 12th council meeting and then bringing forward to you the resolutions to approve the 2025 tax levy budget and then HRA, EDA tax levy. So I apologize, that was my final slide and hopefully bring some clarity to what Councilmember Ross was asking about with LGA.
Been working on this for multiple months, trying to get to these numbers and push them down. I think at the last meeting, we were up around 20%. So to be down toward that 14 is a big improvement. Over the next couple of months, we'll keep working on that and fine-tuning those numbers. None of us like spending extra money. It's never comfortable, never good for the homeowners, but and businesses, don't forget the business. But it's almost a necessity, and we've got to keep the city moving. And it would be tough to say which part of the city aren't we going to keep improving and keep going forward with. All right, so we'll move on to our resolutions. 2024-177, adopting the 2025 preliminary tax levy and establishing a budget meeting date of December 12th, 2024. Motion in a second, please.
Mayor Vrachek.
Ross?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-177.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Move on to Resolution 2024-178, approving the Faribault Economic Development Authority preliminary property tax levy for fiscal year 2025. Councilmember Von Seuss.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-178.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Von Seuss, second by Councilmember Dumboya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Down and passes. Move on to Resolution 2024-179, approving the Faribault Housing and Redevelopment Authority preliminary property tax levy for fiscal year 2025.
All moved.
Motion by Councilmember Karen.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Teal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we will move on to Resolution 2024-189, approve amended public purpose expenditures and purchasing policy.
Yes, thank you for for that. I do have to to say that this is a resolution that I maybe wouldn't normally put on an item for discussion. But I kind of mentioned that with implementing our new financial software, there'd probably be some policy changes coming. And we're to the point now where we just can't hold off on the public purchasing and expenditure policy, which was amended earlier this year. And so as as we've gone through this, there are some significant changes. There's a markup copy available as well as the clean copy. The biggest thing is sort of getting rid of the city administrator approval of unbudgeted expenditures, $10,000 and below. What that doesn't get rid of is authority that is established in a resolution that's adopted at the beginning of the year that says the city administrator has the ability to approve certain unbudgeted expenditures or things that have a timely payment to them. And we'll be talking more with the Charter Commission about that language moving forward. And so we have to develop workflows. Workflows have to be developed on dollars. And so the chart that is left in there related to delegation of authority basically says at the $5,001 level is when a purchase order is required. So that would mean that Councilmember Spooner could not just come in with a an invoice for $6,000 and say, please pay this. It would have to be gone through a purchase order, which requires more steps to to go through as well. It could also be used for something, for example, we purchase multiple vehicles throughout the year that if there's not a payment all at once, and we're making two payments, that you would do a purchase order and then pay, you know, basically liquidate parts of that purchase order. So it's kind of a way to say, here's what we're going to spend and then sort of pay from that. So the funds become encumbered in our financial system. And so that is the biggest piece. And then identifying the the quotes as being a large portion of when of that $5,000 level requiring two quotes at that point, and that those are to be uploaded into the financial system as the purchase order is being prepared. I think that just generally, we'll see how it works. I think that we haven't done any data analysis to see how many transactions are there between $5,000 and $10,000, let's say, that really require, would would be something you would typically do a purchase order for other than just saying it's a dollar. So we're going to just go with this for the for the foreseeable future. But if something needs to change, I do think we could be back in front of you in 2025 requesting amendment to this policy again that might better align with setting up our system and who's doing what at what dollar threshold.
Okay, any questions on the purchasing policy? With that, I would take a motion in a second to approve.
All moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Teal, second by Councilmember Von Seuss to approve Resolution 2024-189. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Down and passes. Move on to Ordinance 2024-20, amending Chapter 13, Article 2 of the Faribault Code, the Faribault City Code regarding the Library Advisory Board. First reading over to Director.
That it it has wording in here that the Rice County Board will appoint somebody. And since this is a a city board, it just makes more sense for the council to do that. We're also looking at the portion of this that talks about the high school youth student who is part of the board. And there are so many children who are homeschooled in our city as well as younger youth who would like to serve. And this would allow them to do that. And also, since our our youth are pretty busy, it would only have them do a one-year term that they could renew. So with these changes, we are looking to better define and help more people be able to to serve on the board. On September 3rd, the council did review these suggested changes by the Library Advisory Board, and they they were in support of those. But tonight, we are asking for you to approve the first reading of Ordinance 2024-.
Perfect. Thank you, Director James. Any questions on these? We did talk about this at the last work session, so it's nothing real surprising to us. What your board desires and for clarification, which is always nice. With that, I would take a motion in a second.
A motion to approve. Ordinance 2024-20.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Karen, second by Councilmember Ross. All in favor, say aye. Oh, what? Oh, ordinance.
Roll call. Excuse me. Councilmember Karen.
Aye.
Councilmember Dumboya.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Seuss.
Aye.
Councilmember Spooner. Councilmember Teal.
Aye.
And Mayor Vrachek.
Aye. That passes. All right, we have no bits tonight. Are there any boards, commission reports, announcements, or project updates? For Von Seuss.
Yeah, I was contacted by the Faribault Diversity Coalition. They made a very, very difficult decision to dismantle the organization after 30 years. They're running out of money, and there's only two board members, both living outside of Faribault. It was potentially one person who would step up. But that was just heartbreaking news, really. Of course, they were responsible also for the international test of falls. So that's where we are.
So if somebody was interested in putting a board together for the international test as of all your years of experience?
Well, if there is no more official. Yes, I can coordinate things, but as that is like a week before the fair, I will not be able to actively participate. Self-assisted. They cannot contact the Diversity Coalition officially anymore.
Sad to hear, but that's the way things go. Anything else? Councilmember Ross?
Mayor, yeah, I don't have a board update or anything, but I do have a question for your insider. Is there an upcoming charter meeting?
There is. I believe it is scheduled for November.
November 13th. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Von Seuss? Or 15th?
I think it is 7:46 in the morning.
Yep, 7:46.
23rd.
Right over at the fire station in the driveway. Please come out and join us for that. Also, because the, it'll come up on us really fast, and it's exactly 30 days away from today, the Faribault branch of the American Association of University Women will be holding a candidate forum on Thursday, October 10th, the Faribault City Council. holding a candidate forum on Thursday, October 10th, in the Faribault City Council Chambers. It will start at 6:30 with the mayors, and it'll be followed at 7:30 with the city council candidates. So if you are available that day, come on down. This will be your time to ask questions. They'll have little sheets that you can fill out, and they'll run the forum and ask the questions that you have. So set on your calendar. Always so much happening in this town.
Full festival coming up, chili cook-off. Councilmembers like to.
October 5th. Okay, anything else? Rick Kinser, nothing? All right, with that, I will take a motion in a second to adjourn.
All moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Ross, second by Councilmember Von Seuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Good night. Good luck.